I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show all members are pressed actually. Get a motion in a second for the consent agenda.
I made that motion.
Okay.
Discussion?
Yes. For A1, when did we decide to make that an interim?
I think what interim?
Human Resources did not know we were doing an interim.
For A1.
Received file.
I don't have it on my computer.
So I'm the...
Human Resources resolution self-release.
We're making it, making them, making her interim HR director?
See, where you, where you reading that at?
This one.
Well, that's not the agenda here.
I, I get it.
No, I, I don't see it anywhere. What are you talking about?
I see the interim either.
I'd like to be clear if we're doing this or not.
Well, I don't see, I don't see interim here anywhere.
All right.
Where did you see the word interim at?
Well, I didn't.
Okay.
Okay, just want to make sure we're not making interim.
Didn't see the word interim anywhere.
All right, then I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, any other discussion about the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign, hearing none, motion passes. Okay, I'm gonna read, yes, I am. If there is anybody from the public who wants to make a comment to the board, they will need to go over to the table there and read the script and fill out a form to make a public comment. At the end, we will reserve 30 minutes, or about 30 minutes, for public comments, but you will only get three minutes to speak on your topic. The board will not respond unless the chair allows it. So anybody that's wishing to speak to the board, need to go over and fill out one of those forms, so. If there's any questions, I'll take them right now. Hearing none, okay, introduce the new hires to the board. That's you, Nicole, is it Harstad?
Yes.
Welcome aboard. Where, uh, where are you coming from? Pot County?
Yeah, Council Bluff.
Council Bluff?
Yes.
Really? You ready to get it, take it on?
Ready.
Okay.
She started yesterday.
Oh, good.
And she's gonna probably go to the counter tomorrow.
Okay.
And, no.
I'm just like, what are you saying?
Whoa, whoa.
Um, she fits very well in office and I am glad that she is one of us.
Maybe she'll bring some of her friends along.
Yeah, I wish, yeah, I wish.
What's your background?
Um, I left pediatric dentistry.
Oh, wow. Little kids.
Yes.
And Dennis.
Yes.
That's not a good combination.
Not always.
Yeah, well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And, uh, congratulations, so. I think you got a good leader to work with, good team down there to work with, so, okay. Okay, Jody Marsh, project manager, secondary roads. Indoor Adam Ring, project manager, secondary roads. Discussion indoor decision to set the date and time to open bid on Watermead County. Project L dash Perrin NE 27 Perrin dash 73 dash 78 bridge materials on September 9th, 2025 at 10 a.m.
So that's this four Sumac Road realignment bridge?
Sumac. And what would be the other road?
Close would be, is that 370?
370, okay.
Or no, 270.
Two, two, you think?
East 270 coming 191.
Okay. It's nice to get kind of that description because the general public, when I say L dash NE 27, where the hell is that at?
This is via Southwest Van Bridge.
Yeah, okay.
Concrete there.
Yeah.
So this is just for the bridge components?
Components, okay. This is one that a contractor is gonna do?
Be in-house.
Be in-ho, oh, in-house, okay, good.
Preliminary, in-house.
In-house, yeah, yeah, I get it.
I'll make the motion that we set the public, or the bridge, the bid opening for September 9th, 2025 at 10 a.m.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Tom Coleman, thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Tom Coleman, manager, regional water, Matt Wyatt, director of planning and development, Mitch Kay, chief financial officer, discussion and decision approve the loan forgiveness request. Forgivable loan agreement dated July 15th, 2021 is amended with the regional water for the water improvement project with by Watermead County. Tom, Matt, you guys want to admit?
Yeah, this is kind of a follow-up, when Tom was here a couple of weeks back. I don't know if he has any new information to really provide you guys, but we, part of the loan agreement was to, for regional water to request the forgiveness, and so that's the documentation that you guys received. And then along with what you guys received, and they'd asked Tom for some invoices to back up the cost of the materials, which he provided me back in November, was all over the 300,000 that we did that for. So, I mean, with that, everything that I've looked over and reviewed, everything's in good shape with the approving this, so. Anything else? Good right there, Tom?
The corner lots were gonna do their own well. Did they drill the wells or they gonna hook up?
Yes and yes. So they drilled the wells, Jim Hughes Real Estate drilled wells on the properties that they had said they were not going to have as part of the 82 that they were providing in the development. But of those lots that they've sold, both of the homeowners have said, well, it doesn't make sense for me to not connect to a pipeline that's right there close to my property, just in case. Because we're hearing stories almost weekly now of individuals whose wells are crapping out on them out there in the rural part of the county. So they, both of them have asked for service and we have begun the process of getting them hooked up once we get the administrative issues with Exyra and Brayton sorted out.
Okay.
So.
Good. I'll make a motion to approve, I'll second.
So they will, um, have both available to them?
That's correct.
So what, you just have a minimum charge if they don't use water then?
If they ask for service, they understand that there's a mandatory minimum fee per month as part of our contract so that we have the revenue to pay the loan off with USDA. There is a requirement that they have a separator so that there's no way that their well water can get into our system, but then they choose, both of them have indicated their intention is to use their wells for their property and to use the water that we're providing for the interior of their house for the cooking and drinking and bathing and that kind of thing.
So if they were not to use the water for the house or the yard, then what is a minimum charge? What is that minimum?
Only if, only if they wanna hook up, I, I am not 100% sure what that is. I believe it's right there around 60 bucks is what we had placed. Because one of, one of the big discussions I still remember with, with the board member Whitman was the, that we were not gonna charge them more than what we had as the standard rate for the folks up at Urban Bluffs. So we have that, we have that peg so that is, that's tied to the same starting point from there.
But that's a monthly charge.
But that's a monthly charge, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
All right, Tom, you still have water flowing to Tower 5, is that the right tower?
Correct.
Okay, you have any chlorination issues with that?
No.
Okay, do we have water to both of those developments off Pioneer Trail?
The water is ready to, all they gotta do is turn the valve, the water's there.
So it's all set up, ready for them?
Yes, sir.
Be there, okay, perfect, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign, hearing none, motion passes.
It's been a long, long road.
Yeah, I apologize, um, we should have deleted this 2C from the agenda, is that correct, Marion?
Yes.
Yes, so I guess I just take a, I don't know, you make a motion.
If you have an unanimous consent, you can take it off the agenda.
So.
Just ask for unanimous consent, it's taken off your agenda.
It's approved, unanimous consent to take 2C off the agenda.
Thank you, we need to do a little bit more preparation.
Yeah, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign, hearing none, motion passed. D, Jeff Franco, right? Executive Director, Conservation, Garfield, no Garfield?
Garfield's not coming in.
Okay, Manager, Risk Manager, Safety, discussion decision to approve the Nature Hitchcock Center Board Block contract.
Yeah, where the heck? Long contract.
It is.
That's on page 26.
Kristen, review that, Jeff?
Kristen did review the.
Okay, I don't know where she's at.
It's 160,000, is that right? And how much of that was covered by insurance, 80? About 100,000. 100 of it? Are you putting any, um, I don't know what the right word is, the, not, not wood, are you putting any?
Composite?
Composite, yeah, that's a good, that's a good.
No, no, it'll all be green tree will be the replacement wood that's going back.
Okay. There was some, was there some angle iron support on that somewhere?
It will be angle iron support, mitigation measures for the top of the railing.
Okay.
It'll be spanning posts, providing additional structural support so any future trees that may fall on it will have a better chance.
That's across the entire trail.
That'd be at both sides of the railing.
This is the same thing you talked about, right?
Yeah, so, in total, between the insurance coverage and then what FEMA should cover for some of these damages, after everything gets all squared up and so, and then we've already received some of the insurance proceeds, we verified that with Garfield this morning. I mean, this should be a net zero to the county in the end, but we'll have a little bit upfront for the mitigation efforts, especially which the board had already approved a few weeks back. We showed those photos, but then whatever FEMA doesn't cover, we may try to reach back out to insurance to cover the difference, but all in all, we should end up being whole.
How long will FEMA take?
I don't, you know, I'm getting a little more optimistic, so I'm hoping maybe we have some funds by the end of the year.
Depends on the amount that, 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 a certain amount.
Yeah, Fundless Ball Project category and we broke this.
Money comes pretty fast.
Yeah, and I think we're trying to really make sure we have the insurance side of it sorted out before we request the funds from FEMA, just to make sure that we're not.
Right.
Regret or anything there.
What did you say, um, did you say ARPA money?
No, FEMA money.
FEMA money, then was there another money besides insurance?
That should be just the two.
Just those two?
Just the two.
Okay.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
He said something about coming back to insurance if FEMA doesn't cover.
Yeah, that, that'll kind of be, uh, just see how that flows through. We don't know exactly how that'll work yet, but one way or the other, we'll, we'll get there.
When would this project start?
Uh, once we get the contracts signed, they'll be able to get a start date to us. So hopefully in the next few weeks.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
You've worked with this contractor before, Jeff?
This will be our first time working with them, but very good reviews.
Who is it?
C2.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign, hearing none, motion passes.
Much.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Discussion and decision regarding the interim engineer position within the secondary roads department, including updates, do any resolutions impacted by the engineer position?
Last Thursday, I had sent out an email to the board talking about resolutions that we approved in January that allowed the engineer-specific instructions on things that they can and cannot do according to Iowa code. And today is our interim county engineers' last day and as of tomorrow, we have no interim engineer. I was hopeful that we could have resolutions in our packets today, but apparently I dropped the ball on the communications on that. Last Thursday, there were four inches of rain that fell in Gretna causing flooding and the same thing could happen in Pot County at any time. And we don't have any, at the end of the day, we don't have anyone in place to issue proclamations or close those roads in the event of a disaster. I think maybe we need to have a special meeting on Friday of this week so that we can get the resolution signed and get an interim county engineer appointed. It does not have to be, it can be a consultant, it can be from a sharing county. I just think we're at risk by not having somebody in place as of tomorrow. And we don't have it on the agenda to, to put anything in place, and I just thought we needed to talk about it and to understand. The three resolutions that we executed on January 2nd authorized the county engineer or assistant county engineer to close roads for construction and emergencies, that's the one I've talked about. Resolution 6, 2025 authorizes the county engineer or assistant county engineer to execute certificates of completion and make final acceptance of farm-to-market contract construction work. I don't think we've got anything that'll fall into that, but it's possible. And Resolution 7 authorizes the county engineer to issue and sign special permits for the movement of vehicles of excessive size and weight upon secondary roads. And the board authorized four individuals and only one is still an employee. But I think that's pretty timely. Maybe Adam, you can speak to that one as far as what the turnaround for those permits are if they get submitted and how quickly will they come in? So right now, we've got nobody.
They're doing it online, right?
Some are aligned and some are emailed. There's a direct email line.
Yeah, good.
But regardless, we've got nobody in place to sign them.
Has anybody talked to another engineer from a different county about doing this?
No. I haven't.
I, I didn't feel it was my place, but I certainly need a gap.
Legally, Matt and Kristen, what, what's the, our?
I took a look at several resolutions, I don't have them in front of me, so I don't remember which ones are which off the top of my head. There are certain things that you have to have your engineer do.
Right.
And so, um, I'm not as concerned probably as Susan on most of those resolutions. You still have to have somebody in place.
Right.
The fact that it says engineer, assistant engineer, an interim engineer, an acting engineer, they are, and they are legally the engineer at that time. And so for those resolutions, as long as you get somebody on board that is an acting engineer. Right now, I mean, as of, you know, end of the business today, we don't have one. But as long as you have somebody on board, they can take care of that, even if they're acting or interim. There was one of those resolutions that actually named four people and it was John, Brandon, Tina, and I can't remember if it was Mike or.
Mike.
Okay, yeah, we had, it named four people, and unfortunately, that one, we can't, I mean, obviously, as long as Tina is still there, then, you know, but for, for any resolution that named names, only those names will be authorized. And so my suggestion would be that those resolutions should be amended to say, you know, engineer, assistant engineer, like the others.
So what, what would qualify Mike or Tina to be able to sign those?
Well, that, that was a specific resol, I mean, Tina would never have the authority to close roads or.
Oh, no, I know that, I get that, but the one that she, we had permission?
I don't, I don't remember what the one said off the top of my head.
Signing special permits for.
Permits, so, I mean, what would prevent anybody from signing permits?
Well, they don't have the authority right now, because the only.
No, I know, but if we do the resolution, if Tina could sign them, I mean, why couldn't Adam, why couldn't Adam sign them or anybody else sign?
Honestly, you're gonna ask, we'd have to do some legal review of that.
Okay.
It's pretty, you know, that's pretty time sensitive, but, I mean, there's certain things that you have to have an engineer signature.
No, I get it, I get it.
And so I don't know off the top of my head what Iowa Code 309, chapters 309 says as far as what has to be an engineer and what could just be an employee of the engineer's office, but there's a lot of stuff that it has to be an engineer.
Yeah, yeah.
The easiest answer is the board needs to get somebody in place as an acting or interim engineer ASAP. We can help with tweaking resolution language or the one that was problematic, but I think that's your biggest issue is that you need to get somebody on board that's a licensed civil engineer as soon as possible.
Yeah, no, I get it. They haven't had an engineer in Monona County for, yeah, three years now, so. One of them's already out of the quit, so. I'm not, um, know what we're gonna be able to do by Friday, but.
They can reach out.
Reach out to some of those engineers around here.
Montgomery County would be a good option.
All any of them, except for not Harrison County, since they don't have one.
He, he, I believe he's still on board.
No, he's gone. Gone, gone. Yeah, I'll call Shelby and Cass and a couple JDs down in, let's see, in Montgomery?
Karen?
Yeah, there's Gal down there somewhere too.
She's in Montgomery.
Montgomery, JD must be in Fremont or something.
So are we gonna have a special meeting on Friday or?
I don't know that we need to have one on Friday.
Go without until Tuesday?
I feel we should do something sooner rather than later.
These people are gonna have to get permission from the people they work for.
Exactly.
Scott, you said you'll make a couple calls. Yeah, yeah. If you need, if you need to do it on a Friday, I'm in.
Yeah. I don't know when these folks meet, but they gotta get permission, I'm sure, from their authorities to, to work outside the county, so. I can do that.
Just inform them, please.
Okay. Anything else on that?
Can we do? Company?
Yeah, I need civil engineer.
We have, we have quite a few engineering firms around.
Right.
There, yeah, this is an interim.
The guy, the guy in Harrison County, he was an electrical engineer. Yeah, we're, went and did our task and became a civil engineer for about two months and decided to go back to, come back to do computers. Did a lot better than engineers, so. Yeah, I mean, we could reach out to engineering firms too if we want, so.
I, I just think it's of the utmost importance and we need to move quickly.
I would agree.
Just make some calls and see what can come up.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. Okay, update on board members on committee meetings for the past week, Jeff?
Um, I forgot to mention last week, I was at the PACE meeting. Board meetings, but a lot to discuss there. Getting to be, the cost of maintenance for that old, old building is getting to be, it's gonna just increase. They, they are mentioning things that do need to replace, their sound system is one. So, uh, yeah, they're, they're, they're looking, I guess, looking to expand traffic into the PACE center and that certainly would help. But, yeah, they are, they are just kind of treading water, so. It's been, it's been that way ever since, ever since I've been part of that, part of that governing board. But anyway, they're still holding on, so they're doing, I think they're doing a good job, great job for what they do. I believe in that.
I did Los Hills Alliance, uh, went out to the Council Bluff report with Andy out there. And that, that'll do for here.
Okay, tell me, is it?
Yeah.
Um, I don't have any committee reports, but I'm wondering where we're at with replacing the HR director. There was a suggestion to set up a hiring team, um, an interview. I don't think the position's been posted yet, at least I haven't received a notification that it has. I think we need to get that position filled quickly and moved forward. And I just wondered what the plan was.
Is Jenna gone now or she's?
Her last day was August 1st.
August 1st.
It is posted and my understanding, she received confirmation from three or four board members of that hiring team that was suggested. So I think that's where we're at.
What, I haven't heard of this.
Haven't heard of what?
Well, Jenna, Jenna sent out an email.
Not a hiring team, it's a review, did I say hiring?
Yeah.
Okay, a review team.
Interview.
Interview team.
She sent out an email, um.
July 30th.
July 30th, was it?
Uh huh.
I guess, Kristen, were you looped in on that?
I believe I saw the, for the email, yeah. I get it right here.
Pardon?
I've got it right here.
Yeah, and she's made a suggestion on, uh, the interviewed.
Brian's on that too, isn't he?
Yes.
The interview stuff and, uh, I don't know how many people responded, but it sounded fair enough to me, but, so.
But her last day was August 1st. And she was supposed to turn in all of her equipment and things and it sounds like she's still involved in the process?
Not to my knowledge. Did she not get all her stuff turned off and things?
Does anybody know?
The email she sent us on Friday at 10:17, I have given my credit card to Mitch. I will keep the laptop badge and office key until we have a new director hired and training has been provided, but that's not the language in the separation agreement.
Hate to be the bearer of legal bad tidings, but, I mean, I think you're getting a little far afield from the board committee updates portion of the agenda. So if you wanna talk about how you're gonna hire the HR director, we need to make sure that that's on the agenda.
Okay.
Next week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so the only thing I had was the REAP meeting, um, and I guess Mitch was the only winner there at the REAP meeting, right?
City of McClellan put in an application.
Or, City of McClellan, I'm sorry, their, their application went forward, right?
Yeah.
And we had one from Underwood, which was not complete. So we're gonna try to go out to the other communities and other organizations and see if we can get some people to come forth with applications for the REAP monies and, um, that happens every year, so. Work through that. Other than that, that was, um, pretty much it for the last week, start the new month. Public comment. Public comment. Oh, public comment, closed session.
I will make the motion that we go into closed sessions, resort to Iowa code twenty-one dot five, hearing one, hearing aye for discussion and our decision on personnel.
I'll second.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Chairman Bell.
Aye.
Supervisor Whitman.
Aye.
Supervisor Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Shane.
Aye.
Supervisor Jordensen.
Aye.